All the March 22, 2016 Planning Board Meeting to Order. Mr. Secretary of Minutes.
I believe we approved these already.
Okay, they are already approved.
March 12. We did not. I think last week. Well, I recommend approval of March 8 and March 12.
Just in case it's due again.
Just in case they were approved, but I recommend approval again.
I would second that. Motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Thank you.
It's given me the March 12 joint meeting.
Any A and R's, Brian?
There are none.
Okay, thank you. Next is Public Discussion. Send-in Family Trust. WHS and KP/KS Revocable Trust and Wayne Sandlin at all preliminary plan to divide properties of the Sandlin family into nine new lots. The property presently comprises two lots, and we have BSS Design here. Do we have any notices?
Yes. Thirty-two of those were notified by regular mail.
For the acting?
Good evening, Board members. Good evening, State Department. I'm Bob Oment. I'm an attorney in town, and I represent the Sandlin family. So that's Trent and Brian Sandlin who are here, and her sister Nancy who is here, and two other siblings, Wayne and Flynn. The five siblings own most of the property. That's the subject of this application. The plan that you have in front of you now, turned on its side, is a 1994 plan that was approved by the Planning Board as a subdivision in 1995. The property that's the subject of this preliminary subdivision plan is Lot 572. That lot, which is a bit over seven acres in size, has an existing house on it. And Lot 574, which is a vacant lot owned by Brian Sandlin and his wife as trustees, parties whom you referred to. So those are the two lots that are the subject of the application. Lot 573 is the home, house on it, of Brian Sandlin and his wife. And Lot 576 is the site of the older house that was the Sandlin family home, and that's now owned and occupied by Trent, who as I said is here. So those parcels that are corners of the property are not part of the subdivision. There is a small lot at the end of Cedar Street that's separately owned and also has a house on it, is occupied, is not part of this subdivision. Now, this is, I have to say, and you'll agree, a very unusual subdivision application. It's unusual for a number of reasons, including the fact that the boundaries of the parcels are three existing streets. Two of them are town paved roads, Cedar Street to the south and Mare Vista Avenue to the And the third street to the north is a private road. Cypress Street on the other side of Mare Vista is a public street paved, but Cypress Street is not a paved road, and it's not in very good condition in my unprofessional opinion, having driven down it a number of times. When the Planning Board saw this property way back in 1995, I wasn't involved. Brian Curry was here. He was involved way back when. And the Planning Board approved the creation of these three lots. Interestingly, the lots that were approved to be built upon without any improvements to roads were lots 573 and 574, the farthest lots down away from Mare Vista Avenue. The Planning Board, in approving the division of the parcel, said that any further subdivision, any further division of the property would require return to the Planning Board for a subdivision approval. And the decision in April of 1995 simply said that the Board would determine the adequacy of existing ways and the need for additional mitigation of nitrogen. The two lots that were created did have a condition that they have denitrification septic So what's unusual is that normally if you have a parcel of land that's on a town-owned road, as you know, the division of the parcel into more lots would be by an approval-not-required plan. And even the division of land that's on a private road would be approval-not-required if the street had been shown in previous approved plans or met certain standards. Cypress Street, as I mentioned, is in poor condition, but I believe it's 13 houses have been built on the north side of Cypress Street. Similarly, there are around 10 houses on the south side of Cedar Street. And these pubways all have town water in them. Public utilities and overhead lines go down each street, and the municipal sewer is in the process of being installed in these streets. We assume, in proposing to divide the property, that improvements would not be required to the town ways, and that improvements should be made to the private way, to Cypress Street. I'd like to note also that the Sandlin family has owned, has assembled this property over at least 60 years. It may have been earlier, but I think the first portions of it were acquired by my client's parents in 1956, and the history may go back further than that. With that background, I'm going to ask Tom Bunker to now turn to the subdivision plan that's proposed, preliminary plan, to discuss the proposed improvements.
Thank you. The record name is Tom Bunker, BSS Design. Bob's covered a lot of it already. There is one thing I think maybe didn't mention, looking at this plan, there is a little little bay street growing up here, and the abandonment of that is part of the subdivision plan. And also incorporating, I can write this, a small piece right here, and that's the subdivision plan also. So they will, subdivision plan, then the new lots will go all the way to the waterfrontage. See, I've just added a little bit of color. Actually, I can show you on here where a little bay street. Actually, part of the layout is, you know, open water right now here, and whatever is not in open water is wetland now. Could never be, could never be built. But we are proposing to abandon that road there, and then incorporate all the remaining land into these. What we show is nine lots. As mentioned, this lot is not being changed. Lot 573, there is a small sliver of land, triangular shape of land here, which is being created, and it'll be annexed to Lot 573. And a little parallelogram in that location will also be added to 573. That's presently they park their cars in that location. Cypress Street is about 800 feet long. Cedar Street's about 600 feet long, and the total area we're talking about here, I think including 573, is about nine acres. Most of the lots inland, as you can see, have a minimum of 40,000 square feet. They're just over. Those might be adjusted a little bit, 40,005, 40,700, in that range. The two lots on the waterfront are larger, in the 53, 51, 53,000 square foot range. Of course, it's because we have setbacks from the wetlands and flood zone considerations, so we could not create 40,000 square foot lots along there. The 100-foot setback line from the wetland is right here, so you see this lot diameter circle that I put on each one. It can easily fit outside the 100-foot from the wetland, so that setback from the wetland can be maintained, as Conservation Commission would like. The flood zone does go through here, elevation 12, the flood zone. It might be possible to get a house out of the lot, a small house out of the lot, but FEMA does allow houses in the flood zones, as long as it's not a basement or a crawl All the houses, in the previous subdivision plan, the nitrate loading was a consideration, but of course, as Bob mentioned, the town sewer will be built along both Cedar Street and Cypress. All the houses here will be connected to that sewer, so there will be no addition of nitrates into Little Pond. And the construction of these two houses on Lots 1 and 2, and of course, all the others will conform to, can conform to all wetland zoning and FEMA requirements as these lots are drawn. Lot 2 on this plan is roughly the same buildable location in size as Lot 574, but as you see in Lot 574, the access to it from the road is right down in the area that's within the wetland conservation setback. In this case, Lot 2 has frontage up onto Cypress well away from the wetland. And in this area, up here, there is a drainage, utility, turnaround, shared driveway easement, so that Lot 1 can get a driveway going up that way, again, to stay away from the conservation concerns. So it'll be a shared driveway. It's only two lots, so we don't need a special permit for this shared driveway, but they can share a driveway over that part of the lot right there. The road, Cypress Street, surface is very bad, rutted, potholed, unpaved, and so we have surveyed along here, we see all the houses going down. This is the, for the purpose of this profile, north is down on this sheet, so these houses are along the north side of Cypress Street. And we located the, measured the elevation of the driveways in the ground along there, and so you see this location here. In order to tie into the existing driveways and not cause undue grading problems with the driveways, we're proposing to have this portion of the first 450 or so linear feet of Cypress Street, it will only slope at about 1/2 percent. The minimum slope by subdivision regulations, 0.8 percent. But the main slope of this, every road has a cross slope of 2 percent. So what we're proposing, you see in the cross section at the bottom right, the roadway will slope to the left into a grass swale, and that will, one, capture the runoff, infiltrate through there, filter it to keep sediment nitrates out of the groundwater. And in some infiltration there, the smaller, smaller rainfalls won't have to go anywhere, they'll just go into the soil as is. There will be enough slope at the 1/2 percent to run down in the larger rainstorms, down to a location 1/2 percent, then it goes up to about 1 1/2 percent, and then it finally steepens to about, I think, 4 percent down that location. So down here, at the end of where we're proposing to pave, is where the turnaround driveway utility easement is on Lot 2. And in that location, there is a, the end of the pavement is right up here, and there's a berm across the road, a shallow berm, a paved berm, which would direct the water into a drainage basin. And we haven't finished all the calculations, but there are leaching pits in that basin, so that if, depending on the sizing of the basin, if we need more, any other water can go into the leaching. And this is in keeping with your desire to have runoff go into this type of bio-swale that can filter the sediment, and the vegetation in that area can use the nitrates that might come off of the pavement and into that location. Last 280 feet of the road will be regraded with dense grade, just to get the puddles and whatever out of it, make it easier traveling through there. But this Lot 1 or 2, none of the proposed lots will use that last 280 feet as access, it's just improving the situation for the last three or four houses that are down the road there. The utilities, there is an existing water main and hydrant on Cypress Street. On the south side, there's a gas main on the north side of Cypress Street, and of course, the sewer main will be going through there. And we presume typically sewer mains are in the center line of a street, and so that'll take up both sides in the middle of the street. That's one reason why we didn't put the leaching pits within the street layout. I think there's just, there's not going to be room for that, and within the road layout, and that's why we put it up in the, in that easement on Lot 2. There is also overhead power and telephone running on poles along the north side of Cypress Street, so we're not proposing to put any of those utilities underground, just use the existing poles for that, and they'll be, one of the waivers. In addition, we'll be asking for a waiver of the width of the pavement. We have only, I believe, 18 feet wide of pavement, rather than the typical 20 plus two feet of berm. The road grade, at least the beginning of it, is slightly less than what's typically required. It's to waive the requirement for sidewalks and street trees, and as I said, we'll not be putting the cable utilities underground. Two of the lots, 8 and 9, front only on Cedar Street, which is a public street, has a very narrow, very, rather small diameter water main. I believe you have a referral from the Water Department in there. We have added a utility, water main easement, along, across Lots 7 and 8, and are proposing to have two water services tapped off of the main in Mare Vista to run down here. It'll be two 2-inch diameter mains, services rather. The first one will cross Lot 7 and serve Lot 8, and the other will cross Lots 7 and 8 and serve Lot 9. This is in keeping with past policies, we've been allowed to create this type of easement, run a service along an easement on private property. The Water Division does not allow services to run within a street layout, but they have approved this type. And in this way, it will not be overtaxing the water main that serves all the houses on the south side, and then these other two existing houses on the north side of the Lot 3 will contain that one existing house and a couple of outbuildings noted here. Lot 573 will have a little bit of land added to it, a couple pieces added to it, and that's the house on that. And then, as Bob said, the house up at the northeast corner is on a pre-existing lot in that location. So we feel that this is a good use of the land. Nearly approval not required, but we're coming here for your approval of, preliminary approval of this, this plan. I believe we'll take in your requirements, unless Bob has more to add. Any questions there?
Could you run down the list of waivers you're looking for?
I don't think you usually get a preliminary plan with as much detail as we've submitted in this case, with a complete plan and profile. And our application also included a very detailed list of waivers, a two-page document, the first portion of which gave the history of this, and then went to actually a list. So these are the waiver items from the document that you already have. And keep in mind that that 1995 approval said that the Planning Board's review was with regard to nitrogen mitigation, which really wouldn't be on the table now, and two, to the sufficiency of the ways. So the first waived item would be an environmental and economic impact statement. It noted that all these lots will be connected to the municipal sewer, and these lots of 40,000 square feet are going into an area of generally much smaller lots, of which there are about 600 in the neighborhood. And the requirement for an impact statement, we believe, would be beyond the scope required by the 1995 decision. The second waiver would be waive the requirement of road ownership by the town or by a homeowners' association. One of the unusual things about this subdivision, besides two of the roads being town roads, is that the third street, Cypress Street, the private way, is presently owned to the center line by everybody who's on the north side of the street in front of their property, and is owned by three different owners right now to the center line on the south side of the street, because there are three lots with existing frontage on Cypress Street. And we have an existing street, so this is not a situation in which a homeowners' association can own the street. And although with the improvements that are proposed, perhaps the town would be willing to take the street, in which case the residents could make that request, and after some years, being on a list, the town might be, take the street. So we're asking that that waiver, requirement of road ownership be waived, and the street would continue to be owned to the center line by everybody on each side of it. I don't know of another way to do it. We're asking that the 44-foot width of a road layout be waived, because we have an existing layout of 40 feet, and the ability within that 40 feet to install what we think will be a very good and appropriate road. We're asking that, and that's only a waiver from 44 feet to the existing 40 feet. We're asking that the paved roadway be 18 feet wide, which is a minimum required by the town, or the Planning Board's policy, but the subdivision regulations would require, without a waiver, I think it's 22 feet wide with berms on each side. We're proposing, in addition to 18 feet of pavement, a 4-foot shoulder on the south side, sorry, that's right, south side of the street that would be grassed, and then another 6-foot wide grass swale to catch the runoff, much as Tom Bunker has described. But the point is that we do need a waiver with respect to the design of the road. Now, this is an existing dead-end street of about 800 feet. As you know, subdivision regulations require that streets not be more than 500 feet in length without a waiver. So we're asking for that waiver. Actually, we're only proposing to pave 630 feet about, because that's as far as is necessary to reach the shared driveway. I'd note that the current plan, I mean, this is an existing buildable lot, so one could build on it, you would just be using that existing road to get to here. A house would be in the same location as, approximately as for this lot, so we're proposing to keep the... So we're proposing to keep the pavement in the driveway well away from the wetlands and most of the slope that goes down to the wetlands. So we consider this a significant improvement to include Wayne Sandlin's existing lot but put it into the subdivision on this plan. I guess we could have done it after creating a lot, or just adjusted lot lines. But this is what we think works best. So five-hundred-foot dead-end road, to the extent a waiver is required, we'd ask for Inasmuch as we have existing public utilities in Cypress Street, including town water and a hydrant that is four hundred and thirty-five feet west of Maravista Avenue, right about, I think it's right here. We're not asking that there be no requirement for those utilities to be installed. We're asking that there be no requirement for a sidewalk. Again, we, two of these lots, one is an existing buildable lot, the one, this one, replacing Lot 572. And then this lot has an existing house on it. The total number of new lots that front on Cypress Street besides those two would be three. And one of those also has frontage on Maravista. So I believe that it would be consistent with your policy to waive the construction of a sidewalk on the street. And this is a dead-end road without the kind of traffic you would expect on streets that are not dead-end roads. We're asking for a waiver of the requirement that grass plots and street trees be added due to the existing landscaping that are on the residences to the north side and the fact that it's a heavily vegetated parcel on the south side. And furthermore, as is true with some of these other waiver requests, these are really beyond the scope of the review that was required by the 1995 decision. We're asking also, as it's an existing street, that the requirement of installing streetlights be waived also. I think that, given the number of lots, the fire alarm system is not required. And an analysis of development impact is asked to not be required, again, because we have a sewer system and because these lots are so much larger than the other lots in the neighborhood and there are six hundred or more houses. So we've given you that in detail. Those are the waivers that we'd be asking.
Could you go back? You said that the previous decision had qualifications on the review the planning board's supposed to have. Can you review that for us, what that limitation was?
This is the 1995 decision. It approved the plan that we just showed you. And it said a note shall be added to the plan stating that Lot A, which is the larger lot, this is great, I've never used this before, although I got it wrong there. I'm jinxing myself. Just have to turn in the right direction. Lot 572 on this plan was Lot A referred to in the decision. It says it shall not be further subdivided without definitive plan approval. At that time, it says the board will determine the adequacy of the existing ways and the need for additional mitigation of nitrogen into Little Pond from this development. There are no other conditions besides that. So we think simply the adequacy of the ways.
Pretty broad terms.
Yes.
Brian, you have some stuff for us? Engineering looked at this at all yet?
In your package, you'll see there's a referral from engineering. It's got some of the things they like to see at the defend plan stage. Most of those are utility-driven and a design solution for the berm with regards to certain snow plowing issues that the DPW would like answered. You also have a referral from DP giving water from Mr. Rafferty. I think they've addressed those issues that Stephen has in his referral with regards to the cross-country run of the water line from Maravista. And you do have something from Lieutenant Trout with regards to the fire department's looking at hydrant locations on Cedar Street. We could discuss that a little bit further with the development team when it puts together its definitive plan application. You have the decision from '95. I was there. I know what the board did. I know what their thinking was. We could discuss that later, too. And a copy of the subdivision plan that has the marginal notes and the conditions of the board. But let me make sure the board does understand that the predecessor board twenty-one years ago was perfectly within its rights to condition the plan appropriately as it saw fit to allow the one lot down by the water. And we've done it many times before. That requires a definitive plan application for your review. So make sure the board perfectly knows that you are within your rights to review this as a definitive plan. Not sure the scope is limited, but I'll discuss it with attorney in a minute. Other than that, it's a nice preliminary plan. Nice job. They did a very good job.
Comments, anybody?
I don't have any questions at this point.
Yes, Paul?
Yes, I wonder, are there utilities currently on Cedar Street? Because how would the utilities get to the, you know, if you could change the slide to the proposed subdivision of lots? Yeah, for lots seven, eight, and nine?
Well, there's existing town water in the street, but it is an older two-inch main. The water department's referral suggests that adding the two more lots off of that line, which presently serves these two houses as well as the houses on the south, that that could overtax that line. So that's why Mr. Bunker has proposed individual service lines running from the more substantial main in Maravista Avenue. Obviously, our goal is to avoid the considerable expense of bringing a new main down Cedar Street just to serve those two houses. And we can bring the service lines from Maravista.
And electricity?
Electricity is overhead existing on the street.
On Cedar? Cedar Street?
Both, yeah, all the streets. Also, of course, the town sewer. Mr. Bunker mentioned gas in Cypress Street. Do you know, Tom, if it's in Cedar as well? Maybe somebody here knows. But anyway, they're, it's a town road.
Telephone and all of those are all on Cedar Street also? Telephone lines and?
Yes.
Power and everything?
Yes.
Thank you.
I saw the referral from the fire department seeking a hydrant on Cedar Street. Could you indicate where the closest hydrant would be on Cedar Street now?
Well, I believe there's a hydrant at the intersection of Cedar and Maravista. And both of the lots we're proposing to install or to create, these two lots, would be within five hundred feet of that existing hydrant. So we're not proposing to install a hydrant. I realize that all kinds of improvements, a bigger water main in the street, a hydrant in the street, could be beneficial particularly to the existing residences. But I think it should not be required for our creating just two lots on Cedar Street that are within five hundred feet of an existing hydrant.
Another question is with regard to the lighting. Are both of these streets not lit with streetlights now?
You know, I'm sure others here know the answer to that, but I don't. I don't, I don't know if there are any streetlights. Somebody maybe will be able to answer that for you. Actually, I would think Brian ought to be able to come up, Brian.
She's all the way down to the very end.
Come on up. This is Brian Sandlin, who lives?
Right here. Yeah, the streetlights go all the way to the very end, approximately south of my house, right to the south corner. And don't know about the rest of the street.
Okay, thanks.
On both streets, Cedar Street end?
I don't know about Cedar. Trent, have you noticed since?
Cedar Street, I'm not sure if there are. I know the town eliminated a lot of the streetlights way back because of cost and stuff.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, Paul?
Just curious, the road to be abandoned along the edge of Little Pond, is that going to be removed or just?
No, there is no road there. Never has been built.
Said road to be abandoned all along here.
Well, the road doesn't exist. I mean, it's just wetlands. Most of it's now underwater. To the extent there is land on the other side that is on the water side, that's part of land that's actually owned. It's a separate land court lot, very little of which exists. Right up here is, I think, the only tiny triangle of land that is actually on the water side of the street. But the ownership of that paper street runs to, goes with the land on each side of it, which would be Wayne Sandlin. But it's all wetland, can never be built upon. And so it's proposed to be abandoned. Given, we actually had a plan that because of the area, there's enough area on the property to have created one more lot. It was just getting too tight and we weren't able to really adjust the property lines around the existing houses the way we wanted. So we dropped a lot.
What do you guys think about some of the waivers, like sidewalks?
Well, are there sidewalks on any of the other streets on Maravista?
No.
The other streets in Maravista don't have, the town streets in Maravista do not have sidewalks. Except Maravista.
Jim, do we want to ask the public? Start discussing?
I was asking a question. You guys, we can go to the public, too, yeah? We'd like to discuss it afterwards. This is preliminary plan, so we can talk about it. Okay, this is a preliminary plan. Does anyone from the public have any comments?
Or question?
Do you have to come up and identify yourself and ask a question?
Mr. Chairman, members of the board, I apologize. I just got a lot of this information myself. But my name is Michael McGurty. I am the property owner of 10 Cypress Street. I'm here representing a number of my family members who are not here this evening. My mother, who owns 2 Cypress Street, 6 Cypress Street. My brother U, who owns 14. Brother Paul, who owns 16. Brother Brian, who owns 18 Cypress Street. Brother John, who owns 36. And my sister, who owns 38.
Sidney McGurty Street.
My cousin, who owns 34, is not here either. First of all, we have no objection to the lot layouts. Everything, that's great. The McGurty family has been there not as long as the Sandlins, but pretty close. They've been there, say, sixty years. We were there fifty-five. So we have been in this area for quite some time. Given all the information that I just had the opportunity to take a look at, we're not concerned with regards to sidewalks if that comes up. Another question came up. There's a streetlight at the end of Cypress Street. Just one streetlight. Our main concern is the roadway itself. This is, again, the first time I've had a chance to take a look at it. We see that it ends in a portion of the roadway coming down. Not sure exactly because I haven't been able to take a look at a good plan. They talk about a berm and the rest of the roadway being repaved. And I appreciate that in a '95 decision on a subdivision with a single lot at the end, it has now all changed because they've incorporated that original approval of that one lot now into this eight, nine-lot subdivision. So the '95 decision doesn't have a lot of bearing any longer because it's a totally separate subdivision as you would look at it now. And I think that some of the issues that we'd like to look at closer is basically the roadway. I appreciate the eighteen-foot width, and I can understand that. And a lot of the roads are eighteen feet, I guess, down that general area as you get up further towards the heights, which was great in 1958 and 59, 60 and 65, where there was only one car per household. Cypress Street does get crowded in the summer months. Making a shorter street is not going to be something that I'm sure that my family members and the other people and some of the other brothers are here, they can speak for themselves, are going to look to look for a waiver to cut down the size of the roadway. We're happy to take a look at it, go out to the road, lay it out. There's no disagreement. The road's in tough shape. It's worse now because they just put a gas line down the street and they did a terrible job. And there's more potholes than there's been in fifty years on that street, which is a problem. I don't know what they brought to fill in and how they compacted it, but they did a terrible job. And it is in rough shape right now. It's, again, worse than it's ever been. So with just the initial review of what I've seen this evening, there's a lot of other questions that I have that I really am not prepared to even ask because I haven't had a chance to review it. And again, we do not oppose the Sandlins subdividing their property. They certainly have every right to do it. And I'm sure it will get done. And again, we just have to take a closer look at the roadway and see how it's going to affect us and our investment and our neighborhood and our homes. So that's the only questions I have and what I wanted to bring up. If there's any other questions about Cypress Street, I'm sure I could answer them for you. So, yeah, thank you.
Anybody else? Ken?
I don't have any comments at this point. Fair enough information.
We have a lot of information to read here. We just got this all tonight. I have a concern about the paving. I'd like to hear the engineers weigh in on that. I remember sunrise with the half-paved road and the dirt and grade problems in maintaining it and the problems it did over time. So I wanted to understand the requirement that you're asking for a waiver that the road doesn't have the right amount of slope? Is that what I heard? You want to keep it? It's the dirt portion of the road we're talking about.
The dirt portion has a steeper slope.
Okay.
The dirt portion is at the far right end of the plan down here. That's probably going about four percent or something. It's really the first part. Center line of Maravista Avenue is here. And it's going down this way. This is about 0.5 percent.
Now, that's, you said, which is the dirt portion?
All the way down there. Just toward the bottom, toward Little Pond.
Where's the paved portion, then?
From here to right here. So this is paved all the way to there. It's this first, you see, it's flatter through this section, right through here. This is the area, four hundred feet, the slopes are about 0.5 percent. This is the area, 400 feet, the slopes are about 0.5%. And that is sort of the requirement of meeting the grade of all the driveways along there. But it does have a 2% side slope, so the water will sheet off into the drainage swale. But just the water will not run longitudinally. It will somewhat, but in general, if it has a 0.5% going this way and 2% going to the side, it'll go to the side into the drainage swale. That's the part there, that it's the one waiver where the minimum slope, the town likes is 0.8%, and this is about 0.5%. If necessary, you know, we could probably increase that to 0.8%. But I think it's adequate for this length, because we have the, if you have a drainage system that relies on catch basins, then 0.5% is too flat. It won't make it to the catch basin. But in this case, we just have a cross slope, no berm on the lower side of the pavement, and then it just drains off into the grass swale, which is the type of drainage system that in the regulations you say you prefer. The flatter roadway will work, because the water will just go off to the side. But at the end, where it approaches Little Pond, that's at 4% or about 4% or so. That's not a waiver from any requirement.
Yes, Ralph?
Yeah, Mr. Bunker. How does a developer go about getting permission to pave the half of the road that belongs to the other people?
The owners on each side of the street have an easement to use the entire street. And those easement rights include the right to make improvements on the road.
Both sides?
No permission is needed to do that. What the Sandlins are trying to do will, we think, substantially improve the road for the benefit of everybody on the street. They're not doing it because they want to benefit everybody on the street, but the result of this project is, we think, to do exactly that. In some situations, a country road, people want it to stay the same and wouldn't want it to be paved, perhaps. I don't know if there's anybody who thinks that. I hope everybody thinks that this is going to be a good result. On the other hand, and the Sandlins are prepared to do this all at their cost. There are procedures to follow that, to create a road district where private individuals can require everybody on the street to participate in improvements. What we're doing, the Sandlins are proposing to do all of this at their expense, but they don't want to do a lot or any more than is needed to serve their property. And while we are proposing to regrade, which would be a significant improvement at the end of the road that isn't to be paved, we don't want to pave more than we need to because of the expense. And also, without putting in more drainage facilities at the end of the road, I think you've got a situation where you could have runoff that's going down towards wetlands. But most of the road would be, the runoff would be controlled, all that paved area by what we're proposing. I guess that's a pretty long answer to your question about whether we need permission from anybody to do this.
Thank you.
Yeah. We just need your permission.
Good. So I think it's great that you've come with a preliminary plan, which allows for public input early on and our input as well. And given the comments from the neighbors from the other side, I wonder if it might be an opportunity to both improve the slope of the road and maybe incorporate, maybe with some help from the neighbors, incorporate those last few houses in the road plan, maybe the drainage could be, you know, additional drainage at the bottom for that last slope? But maybe they'll have to come forward with an idea of their own to participate?
Well, what I, again, as I've said, what we filed, I think, is much more than, I think what we filed is what you'd expect for a preliminary plan. But it's nice that we have an opportunity to have discussion and make changes. We would like to end up knowing fully what needs to be done on the definitive plan. I think what we would like to do is be able to make changes to the plan over the next couple of weeks, talk to the McGurty's, and deal with any of the referral issues that we haven't already dealt with. Some of the changes that have been made to the plan were in response to the water department in particular. So we'd like to get this plan right and be confident of its approval at the definitive plan stage, and I think it's worth continuing this discussion so we can improve the plan to the extent needed.
Just one quick question. How many houses are at the end of the road that aren't paved on the other side? When proposed, I guess you said, proposing around 630-foot of pavement, how many houses or lots are beyond pavement?
Sure.
Three or four.
Well, that's the end of the pavement.
Okay.
So, looks like three.
What do you guys think about a site plan, a site visit?
Yes.
I think so. Anybody else? I think it calls for it. They've got a much better understanding of exactly what they're doing if we've walked it.
Do you want a group site visit, or just go out and check it out?
Should we do it individually, Brian, or should we have a collective site visit?
It's up to the board. If you want to go as a quorum, then I have to post the meeting.
I wouldn't mind going as a quorum and talking about it, you know?
I'll get it taken together.
We don't do it that much, but this is a lot of work. Yes, Paul?
Mr. Sandlin, I'm just curious, on the north side of Cypress Street, there's a lot of homes that this gentleman just referred to. What's the average size of those lots there?
Well, I think you, did you just say the north side of Cypress? Yeah, north side of Cypress.
There are multiple lots here that this gentleman just talked about. What size?
You know, that's a...
They look very small here, but they may be very long.
7,200 square feet or so, if I'm wrong, somebody should correct me.
That's the average area.
Yeah, that, some are smaller.
I didn't hear you, how much?
I said 7,200, and as an average.
So they're just the size of these lots going in, roughly.
That's right.
No. Okay, we'll schedule a site visit and another meeting sometime, probably right after town meeting. All right, Paul.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thanks.
The next is applicant Pier 37 site plan review. We'll give you a minute to get out, folks, if you're all leaving together before we jump into the next one. Advocate Pier 37, make site plan review to enlarge existing outdoor deck and closed porch and remove some parking and replace the previous coverage of 88 Scranton Avenue. Notices.
Father Berg, Father Berg been notified by regular law. And there was a public publishing date of March 11th.
For the advocate?
My name is Brian Bork, representing the advocate. I'll give a brief intro. I'll let Mr. Bunker resolve some of this project. But good evening, board. The world played out, I guess, you know, top act all after that, mission to be a lot quicker. I assume that most have played with property question yet, or else that's 37. I don't know if I can use this one, I think I got all messed up.
People at home don't see it when you do that, that's the thing. That's why the stick is there.
All right. Basically, this existing deck, in portion of the restaurant in the rear here, proposing to enlarge this deck on both ends. And obviously, the trivia is going about 1,000 square feet. At this time, it's not going to increase the occupancy of the structure, it's going to give more elbow room. There is also something that's going before the zoning board of appeals that's going to deal with this little area and increasing the bathrooms. The biggest factor right now is the number of bathrooms in the facility for the occupancy. But right now, it's a little bit more elbow room for the deck if they have a team out there. So as part of the project, and this is our overall bigger picture of the whole thing when this goes together, to improve some of the site up at Scranton Ave, which, as we all know, again, is a very traveled street, a lot of events with the road race and all the activities down at the park there. More or less to beautify, take away some of the pavement there, and put more plantings and not a pervious coverage up at the street, take away some parking spaces in that way. A lot of the parking here, right now, is dealt with by a valet system, so the number of spaces we have is not necessarily an issue, because we have more than what we need in valet parking. I'm going to hand it over to Tom for summary, if you have any questions about the specifics of that, or if you want. Can you get the whole?
Thank you for the record, Tom Bunker with BSS Design. We prepared this plan for the McLaughlin family, Pier 37, Boathouse Restaurant. In particular, Lot 35, this lot right here, going back to the water, 88 Scranton Avenue, the restaurant building, just the restaurant building here. Lot 35 comes along and goes, is the cleaner, park cleaner building here, so Lot 35 goes up, down to the water, and it's along, along here, and up, down to the water that way. So the building, building is on Lot 35, two buildings is on Lot 35 also. 67,000 square feet, about an acre and a half. It's a marine use district, and there are some marine uses on here, there's a, well, considering the holdings there, there's a mechanic's building, there's an office building, there's parts and sales of boating equipment and boat parts. This is where they have the boats up on racks, the set of racks here and here and along across here. They take, you know, take the boats, boats down from the racks with a forklift, put them in the water in this location here, and then people take them out. They're supposed to get the boats back by 5 o'clock, and that's when all of this shuts down. People would come back in the boats after 5 o'clock, have people tie them up on this long float here, and they get taken out of the water in the morning. See, it's on, between Scranton Ave and the harbor, to the south of this is where the Marina Park, the town property is down here, and then there's more business up here, Robbins Road is right up here, goes across to the heights. In the winter, if you go by the areas, you just, they just do a lot of boat storage there. So this is all, right now, this area is all full of boats wrapped up in the plastic, and they're boats on pretty much wherever they can fit on this property over the winter. As Brian said, we have this, the one restaurant building, restaurant and bar in the center part of the lot. Currently, it's non-conforming as to lot coverage, 80.6%, where the lot coverage allowance is 70%, as by structures and paving. So they're 10.6% above the allowance, it's all pre-existing. The allowed coverage by structures is 40%, and what we have is 16%. So there's more, more structural coverage could be added. So what they want to do, this one here. This is the existing building here, so what they're going to do is add deck here and here. Those two bits of deck, right now, there's some, a deck area right here, and ultimately they close that in, and actually take some of the deck off, and that would become interior space in that location. So this is a slight reduction of coverage by building. I have a, over on the far right, there's a table of coverage up on the north side where they're adding the deck and a set of egress stairs. This is a part of the fire code, set of egress stairs here. Proposed setback to the lot line is greater than 20 feet, which is the minimum requirement in the marine district. Between some steps and other pavements coming out, they're adding deck here, there's a ramp here that they're taking out, other things. Adding a total of 1,311 square feet of structure, which they have, said they have the room to increase the structure, they're going from 16.3% to 18.3%. So there's still less than the 40% lot coverage by structure. And then from some locations, taking some pavement out, there's some pavement coming out from here, a little bit of pavement, actually taking some deck off here. There are some parking spaces here they're taking out. So actually taking out a net change of paving and parking of 1,500 square feet. So there's, we've calculated in here, a reduction of 192 square feet of, between the category where they're over 80.3%, we're decreasing it, or 80.66%, or they're decreasing it by 0.28%. Or essentially, it seems the same, but a slight reduction of 0.28%, so going to 80.38% from 80.66. So it's a small actual improvement in lot coverage by structures, paving and parking through this. And then, Brian mentioned, some pavement is being removed from this area, so you're going to make landscaping areas, this would be in sort of the marine, ziriscaping beach motif, as we have out front here somewhat, the sand, beach grass, bayberry, beach plum type of planting, perhaps held back with some of those piling, you know? That will improve the look of this part of Scranton Ave. As far as parking, it's hard to show in a black and white, maybe this looks a little odd too, but the, what we have here, there will always be valet parking available. As I mentioned, after 5 o'clock, all the boats are supposed to be in, the forklift stops running after 5 o'clock, these other businesses shut down, this gate will close. There's a rope with a sign across it, this is the only other, other than this gate right here, this is the only other access to the back area. So there'll be a rope and an attendant here, this is for, the sign for valet parking. So there'll be a rope and an attendant here, this for, the sign for valet parking. So it is, all this orange is potential valet spots. So for the valet circulation, you come in here, there's a little structure right here, with a valet stand, valet attendant, drop off the car keys, and they come through here and park one of these locations. What Brian wanted me to do was to show what, there should be no more than three deep, move no more than two cars to get to the third car in there. And of course, there are so many different spots that most of these are only two deep. So any of here, like this one or this area, the only, these are the only two places where the cars would be three deep. And obviously, these would be parked last, where otherwise, the cars would be spread around the lot so they could easily be, you know, removed and brought back. Obviously, the reverse of this, be brought back up and give them the key and go back out that way. The green, these are the self-parking spaces. There are one hundred and twenty-five of these, so people can come in. This, this entrance here, this is an enter and exit to these parking spaces. And it's connected through here, another enter and exit two-way for all of these. This is an exit-only, so people can come in, get into some of these spots, and then they'll have to exit that way because of the, the width of that aisle. So there's a hundred and twenty-five spaces, and when they start to fill up, or maybe some people would want valet parking anyway, then they will always be available to put your car in the back in the valet parking. The, at full build-out, with this deck and other, other improvements, a full build-out, have a capacity, building, building and fire department occupancy of four hundred and seventy-five patrons. That would require two hundred and thirty-eight cars. There are also twenty slips along here, and each one of those slips have to have one car for their, the people with the boats. So we have a total of two hundred and fifty-eight parking spaces required. And between the one hundred and twenty-five self-parking spaces and one hundred and thirty-four valet parking spaces back here, we have two hundred and fifty-nine spaces. With, without all this valet parking, they say that they've never had this fill up. There are a lot of people that walk from the heights. Some people take taxis, some drive. At the worst, this could fill up possibly on, well, it's not expected to fill up above this capacity, but there's probably only two weekends out of the year, the road race weekend and the Fourth of July weekend, when it really gets that busy that they might need all of this parking on there. We feel the, the circulation on this with the valet works well. There are enough entrances and exits that people can, can come to ours they need, but this will be closed, and the valet parking in the back will have good access control and I think that, that parking, the circulation should be able to work smoothly. That's all they have to say about the site plan. Brian, or?
I have a question. I want you to go over something I didn't quite follow. The non-conformities, are you increasing in total or decreasing in total? Are you getting a net decrease in non-conformities for lot and building?
The building does not non, the building is under the allowed.
But the total conformity is it increasing or decreasing?
The total coverage by structures, paving and parking is decreasing by quarter of a percent.
I wasn't sure. That's, sounds good. Sounds better than going up.
Yeah, absolutely.
Yes.
These drawings are pretty busy, and you mentioned the lot area. Who owns the rest of it?
The family, the same, same owners.
So it's the same owners, so all this area that they're going to be using?
It's all, it's all under their control, their ownership, yes.
The other question I had is, I was there today, and they're actually building a deck out there.
Yes. It's the existing deck.
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah.
Mr. Chairman, wait a minute.
Sorry, we're asking questions.
This is the existing deck, and they got a building permit to raise it. It's not new or increased area. They just raised it to be at the same level as the inside floor for fire code access reasons.
So it appears to be an overhang over the lower area of about two feet. Is that?
It's the, Brian, Brian Genizavell, he's, he's the contractor on the site, so he can, he can. It is what it, it's the size that it was already, you know.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I didn't mean to. I just, I would better.
One more time, go ahead.
The architects here also, they can give you any information or plans on the, on the deck. But the construction that's occurring right now is permitted and only deals with the existing deck, as Mr. Bunker said, to lift, to establish proper footings underneath it, structural beam underneath it, those replaced. As far as, there's no increase whatsoever on the size of the deck. It is actually, it was lifted with cranes, showed up, it is the same structure itself. And also, an opening in the existing building, but again, within the existing footprint, we just made some windows into a large door. But there's no expansion at all in the size of that structure.
At the present time?
At the present time, sure, yes.
Thank you.
It had to do with fire department.
Bring it to the same level.
Regulations, to take some steps out, going from the, into the building to out onto the deck, to take the steps out and make a larger doorway.
You have to be patient with this. It's just a very confusing plan. Okay, it's taken me a long, ten to fifteen minutes to understand what you're talking about, so. It's working out though. I'm getting it.
The colors are very helpful.
Yeah, that made a big difference. When you did that, it made it helpful. You all set?
I'm, I'm set.
Come up in a minute. My son, my son called, I'm hanging Brian McLaughlin. My son kind of runs this, and this is his show more or less. But the idea of raising the deck is so that, in the past, the deck was four steps down, and we had occupancy permits for, I think, based upon what we had laid out before, like three hundred and change folks there. And then, the deck being lower, could only have eighty, and then inside had, say, two hundred. So the problem you had is people would leave the deck, go into the ladies' room or the men's room, and then they'd want to go back on the deck, well, now there were eighty on the deck, they had to wait. So with it all on one level, according to the fire, about, you know, we now can walk within the same building, all on the same floor, which is why we moved it up. And then we haven't done any additions, but we're here to ask permission to put on additions. And with, most of the additions are going to be more outside seating because it's the demand in the summertime. Obviously, this, we have our thirty days when outside seating is great. And we're putting in a slider on the current building so you could open it up and let the air into the seating. So it's been, we proposed to spend quite a bit of money to make it just more summer attractive outside seating. And then because the handicap ramp is going to be all on the, the side of the right of it, to the right of, we've taken, ripped the handicap ramp down. We want to redo it, but that will make it easier for inside, for someone to host, to meet persons inside outside. So there's some function as far as the restroom goes. One entrance, one place to meet the folks, how to seat them and things like that. Hope that answers some of the questions.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
At this point, glad the colors came up because I was like, the black lines, there's so many on this.
So I, I think I get it. You're basically making it a little bit less non-conforming. And you're, but you're adding structure, but you had room to add that on the structure, but you're taking off enough paving to get you a hair less.
Correct.
Conforming, because we really don't want to make anything more non-conforming. Anybody else?
Sounds like a smart use, smart use of the parking there.
No, we just got somebody in from engineering today, and Tom said that you have to speak at it. So we'll go over it tomorrow. Most of it's just got to do with the valet spaces. He may have been looking at the predecessor plan. So we'll go over that with the.
Can we get something from the fire department on this too?
I'll check with them on the gates and whatnot, and we'll go from there.
I think they would, want to know how they're going to get in and out of here. There's a lot of gasoline stored in these things.
We have weekly meetings, so I'll check in with.
Anybody else? Okay.
Right, see it again on the twelfth, twelfth page.
I will be here.
I will.
You're listed.
Kurt will be here.
Okay.
I think we can deal with that. Thanks, one of you. Thanks. Did a good job.
Thank you.
Got us over the hurdle there.
Yeah, the colors.
All set? Okay. Okay. So the next is a, a decision. The applicant, Cadet Enterprises Site Plan Review to Construct One Structure Comprised of a Class Four Restaurant with Drive-Thru Window, Donut Shop, two hundred and two thousand two hundred and seventy-eight square feet, and Additional Space for Three Different Retail Uses, Total of Three Thousand One Hundred and Ninety-Eight Square Feet, Located at Zero and One One Eight Four Sandwich Road by BSS Design.
So just a little housekeeping matter here, Mr. Chairman, please, on the draft motion that you have. Under the first paragraph where it says motion, the revision date, you see it started, it should, should say March fifteenth, I believe.
Is that a January twenty-second?
Right, the, the plans are due on the twenty-second, but the revision date should be reflected to March the fifteenth. The plans you have in front of you are the March eighth plans, but Bunker, Mr. Bunker put together a modification showing the do not enter on the solely entrance to the parking lot, so that's the modification. That's the only difference between the plans you have in front of you and the fifteenth plans.
Doug, how about a read?
Also, condition number one. The last sentence, just the words and predecessor approvals. That is a language that the board put in for Mr. Peterson's plan up on Tom Landers Road. There were predecessor decisions. In this instance, there are no predecessor decisions. So you should delete the words and predecessor approvals. So would read.
Approval.
That the conditions of this approval have been met. Just take those words and cross them.
Okay, for the record, would you read it, Doug?
Sure. March fifteenth, twenty sixteen, draft, motion that the planning board vote to approve the application of Cadet Enterprises Incorporated under Article Thirty-nine Site Plan Review of the zoning bylaw for a plan entitled Site Plan Duncan Donuts Restaurant, Prepared by BSS Design, dated January twenty-second, twenty sixteen. Revised, not filled in.
March fifteenth.
March fifteenth.
Oh, that's the, okay. March fifteenth, twenty sixteen, scale one inch equals twenty feet. Together with a plan entitled Duncan Donuts Restaurant Landscape Plan, Prepared by Yarmouth Port Design Group, dated January twenty-second, twenty sixteen, Revised March fifteenth, again?
No.
Oh, revised March eighth. Okay, that's the one. I changed that. By accident. Okay, so revised March eighth, twenty sixteen, with the following findings and conditions. Findings: The applicant seeks to construct a commercial building comprised of a Class Four restaurant with a drive-thru window, two thousand two hundred and seventy-eight square feet, and additional space for retail uses, three thousand one hundred and sixty-nine square feet, located at One Thousand One Eighty-four Sandwich Road, with the associated parking, drainage and landscaping. The applicant has addressed the issues raised in the referrals from the Falmouth Engineering Division and Fire Rescue Department dated February sixteenth, twenty sixteen, and February ninth, twenty sixteen, respectively, in the form of revised plans approved here. These issues included access for emergency vehicles entering the site and turning movements for delivery vehicles utilizing the loading areas in the rear of the building. The inclusion of a chain-link fence atop the proposed retaining wall also enhances the safety on the site. The board acknowledges and appreciates the efforts by the applicant and the development team. The board has also reviewed the architectural elevations accompanying the application entitled Multi-Unit Commercial Building, One One Eight Four Sandwich Road, Proposed Exterior Elevation, Prepared by Aronian Associates Incorporated, dated January twenty-first, twenty sixteen, and finds these acceptable as presented. The site is located in a coastal pond overlay district for green pond stabilization. The board finds the inclusion of bioswales as part of the drainage system acceptable in this instance as nitrogen attenuation methods, as enhanced nitrogen-removing septic systems are not in a required, are not required in a stabilization area. The site is located in a water resource protection district. Nitrogen calculations provided by the applicant reveal a nitrogen concentration of four point six zero parts per million, which is below the five point zero parts per million required by the zoning bylaw. The applicant has also provided the board with a traffic impact analysis that finds the site distances and curb-cut geometry to be satisfactory. Conditions: Condition one, the plan shall be constructed as approved. Any changes shall be reviewed by the planning board to determine if a modification of this decision is necessary. Pursuant to Chapter Two Forty-Dash-One Eighty-three-B of the zoning bylaw, no permit for full or partial occupancy shall be issued until the planning board is satisfied that the conditions of this approval have been met. Should be condition two there? typo, it's one and one. Condition two, prior to the issuance of a building permit, the applicant shall apply for a curb-opening permit from the engineering division. All work in the public layout shall be performed under the direction of the town engineer.
I would second that motion.
Any discussion? I think we were thoroughly through this before.
If it gets good.
Yeah. Okay.
Got to take a vote.
Motion to approve or second?
We got a second over here.
Or, or I guess he had the motion, I have seconded it. You know, you read it.
It's a motion. No, I didn't hear it moved. I heard it read.
It's a motion by Doug, seconded by Ken, it's on the.
Oh, right, okay, there you go.
I was looking for one of them, am I right? All in favor?
Aye.
Close? Thank you. Okay, the next is a recommendation for town meeting, Article Six, for the April two thousand and sixteen town meeting. Delete signed definitions from zoning bylaw. Why are we doing this, Brian?
At your last meeting, that question came up about cross-references. Ralph had been looking at the two bylaws, and wanted to make sure that the definitions that we're deleting from the zoning bylaw were referenced in the general bylaw that now regulates signs. So I went back to take a look, because you're deleting sign accessory in area and premises overhanging, standing wall and window. Can I give you this little?
I saw the list, yep.
So the accessory sign is covered under sign mobile, removable or portable. There's an entire section devoted to how to calculate sign area now. It's, that's Section One Eighty-four, eighteen of the general bylaw.
And that's handled by others?
It's handled in the sign bylaw. It gets into how you calculate the sign, a wall area, the whole, the whole nine yards. It's just, it's not one definition. There's several definitions that are in that section.
That is under the design review, the sign review committee.
It's under the sign bylaw.
Sign law.
Okay. In this, under Chapter One Eighty-four, on off-premises signs, the same as it was in the zoning bylaw. In the zoning bylaw, we had sign overhanging. Well, it's now signed projecting. It's a projecting sign. It's defined under the zone, under the general bylaw. They had sign standing under zoning. Well, it's now defined as a sign freestanding. And wall sign and window sign are the same as you found in the zoning bylaw. So the good news is, it's all cut.
Thank you for doing that, Ryan.
No, it's a good question, Ralph. So the recommendation now to town meeting is what the board needs a vote, and then we will get that.
will get that to the town moderator.
So I guess we might prefer a motion.
Well, I move that at the April 6th town meeting that we change our recommendation from indefinite postponement to.
As printed.
As printed.
I would second that motion.
All in favor? Aye. Post? None? Thank you. Next is planning board discussion. This is for future meeting with the Conservation Commission primarily to discuss resiliency. The only thing I wanted to do is make sure we start off the meeting by going through the resiliency, the local comprehensive planned goals and policies that were, they were passed by town meeting in, I think it's November 2014. We should just revisit those at the start of the meeting.
And just, we should be able tonight to at least come up with a timeframe that you want to meet, date and time, a venue, the agenda items such as the LCP, any other stakeholders you may want to have at this meeting, other committees that are involved in the resiliency perhaps. And then a coordination meeting authorized Jim and I to sit down with the Conservation Chairman and Panchusdale to come up with a combined agenda because they have a say, too, in what's working.
I think from my perspective, I noticed on the local comprehensive plan, my other two aren't here tonight, but we have spent a lot of time with the DPW. And one of the things that they kept bringing up, and this is one of the things we hope we can address and maybe touch on some of the things of your concern, that presently they're only allowed, if something gets destroyed in a storm, they're only allowed to build back exactly what was there. And they don't have time to go out and get new permits and hearings and bring all the good things to make it a lot more resilient and last better than the next storm. So it just gets built back the way it was and gets washed out the next time. And it's kind of self-defeating. And so one of the ideas was maybe getting together with the DPW ourselves and conservation and develop plans for replacement so if and when they do get knocked out in the storm, we're ready to go. And that was, that's come up several times on the local comprehensive plan. And that's what initiated the comments, some of the things I had. How about yourself, Doug?
Well, one thing I've been doing is reading up on some of this free literature that we've got from the coastal pond, not coastal pond, excuse me, the Coastal Resources Working Group. It's this big production that they made back in 2003 that got some attention, but then it kind of faded. They did an updated version in 2013 which highlights more specifically the specific areas of concern and what those concerns are. So these two items would be great for people to read and get familiar with prior to the meeting so that we can know better where they're coming from as far as geologists and what they're talking about. They explain in here the way sand moves down the coast and ways that we could plan better to lose less beach. So it's good, we should at least get a layman's understanding of these type things prior to that meeting. So, I mean, I think the conservation people will be much more aware of this kind of stuff so we can be more on their page if we do more homework. And then I was going to give these out to you guys tonight, but I guess we're not really going to get into it. But I've been looking around at other projects around the country and what they're doing. Like some places like here in Georgia, they're trying to do natural reefs with oysters and stuff. So we're not going to get into details, but just try to do some reading and get aware of what other places are doing and maybe we can try to see if those ideas fit here.
Brian, would it be appropriate for you to transmit those to all the board members?
Sure, once, you know, for homework.
For homework, yeah.
We can send it along to folks.
In preparation for meeting with conservation, we're not supposed to pass things back and forth. It's supposed to go through you.
Much good to Melinda, and we'll pass it around for your reading enjoyment. So I guess the board, we should really also come down to a date and time and a venue. Because you meet Tuesday nights, and I believe conservation meets Wednesday nights. Did you want to meet on their home turf or your night? What would be the board's thinking on that matter? A neutral night?
Well, I think we've got to do one or the other because if we do a third, we might be overbooking because all of us have other things we do on other nights. We cover 50% of it. If we do it either on our Tuesday or Wednesday, half of us should be available.
All right, so maybe a week that maybe you have off, we can meet with the Conservation Commission and vice versa.
Yeah. We'll talk it over with them and find common ground.
Yeah, I could just try to schedule something with Jennifer McKay.
I would recommend early June. If you think that's not too soon. Right after the election.
That's fine. Sounds good to me.
Early June.
Other question.
Yes?
At the joint meeting with the Board of Selectmen, someone passed out a document from Staten Island that showed a whole graphic. Unfortunately, there's no attribution who did it and why it was for. But it's my understanding it was part of a competition that some group was paid to win this competition. But basically what that appeared to be was a offshore area.
That's the Ocean Conservancy.
But it didn't say who did it or anything. And I thought that was a little, let's say, confusing. I printed it out at that meeting and we weren't really talking about coastal resiliency. That may be.
Just an example of.
Yeah, but who did it?
I did.
Coastal Resilience.
Well, there's actually a link in there if you go see it, and you can watch a whole video, and there's a whole discussion. That was just the printed excerpts of it, but it's actually a whole link that I couldn't bring the link to the meeting, so I had to only bring the printed portion. But it was really designed not to be a printed presentation, but an online presentation with group discussions and follow-through. It takes about 30 to 40 minutes to go through the whole thing.
Well, just hand it out with no discussion. I mean, if we're going to get into something like that, we'd have a discussion. It would just circulate at the end of the period. We really didn't get into any kind of discussion with the Board of Selectmen.
Well, it was just an example of the type of literature you can find online and how easy it is to learn.
I thought we did discuss the living reef aspect.
We did. I discussed it.
And I maybe got some feedback from the Selectmen.
I talked about the fact that it was an idea that was being considered for the south coast of Long Island, which is similar to our south coast.
Actually, it's the south coast of Staten Island, not Long Island. It's Fishkill, Staten Island. Skip a whole island, go by New York City, and then the next island.
Okay.
That's Staten Island. It's pretty close to Long Island.
But the idea was, it was just a concept that I was putting out there just to say we could consider something similar.
But if you'd like, actually, Marlene, I don't know if we all got it, but I got it a couple of years ago, sent out as a link. It was sent to, I didn't know if it was sent to the whole board. We could resend it again. And it's actually quite worthwhile to click through because it's much more, it is meant to be an online discussion.
Well, the state has a program, we've talked about it before, the state has a program looking at different areas in the state to do the modeling on predictive analysis on flood planning. And I again request that we consider doing that. And I'd like to ask the lead author of that, who is based and founded here, to give us a power of effort, too, that we can discuss at one of these meetings.
Would you like to have him come to one of our meetings and give us a presentation?
They've offered to do that. They said they'd be happy to come in and give a brief presentation. But I'd like to get, at least I spoke into the president of the group, and he said he's willing to do it. I didn't get it timed for tonight, when I saw it was on the agenda. But what I'd like to do is get a written, a real brief summary of what that model does.
Who is it?
Who is it?
Who was it again? Who was this again?
It's, the state has a group of people, and the lead author is Kurt Bosmer from Woods Hole Group, based here in Falmouth. And they're going around doing these in various areas of the state at state costs. And it is predictive analysis. I think it's something we really need to look at. And it's coming sooner or later, so maybe we encourage them to do Falmouth sooner rather than some of the other areas, maybe get a priority. So I'd like to be able to get something and either give you a presentation or have him come in for 10 minutes and say what the program does. And I think that'd be very helpful.
Okay. That's great. Do we see time for agenda on that?
Well, yeah, I got down this Woods Hole Group, Kurt and his predictive analysis as a resource for the two boards to discuss as possible agenda item at your joint meeting.
And it seems maybe something like that, we could have prior to our joint meeting. It's just educational for us.
Oh, I see.
Yeah, I'd actually like to learn more. I thought it was something we could do soon.
Because I think the Conservation Commission will be way ahead of us as far as knowledge about these coastal ideas.
I agree.
Okay. That's okay.
So maybe we can squeeze it in in late April or May, whatever.
I don't know. I'll find out.
Which would you like? Would you like a handout? Would you like them to come and visit?
Let's you and I have a discussion. It will coordinate.
We're not looking for.
We're not looking for a handout. I'd actually.
No, that they offered to do it.
That would be great.
Sure, why don't we discuss? All right, so we're looking at sometime in June, Tuesday or Wednesday night here in Town Hall. You'd like to at least talk about the LCP, the goals and policy and the action items. You'd like to at least refer to the Coastal Resources Working Group's documents, talk about some of the living reef, other natural resource methods for resiliency. And you got, the board would like to get up on the curve, and we'd like to talk to Woods Hole Group, come in and give them a talk, which I'm getting so far.
Future agenda items that are not conservation-related.
How about general correspondence?
Are we done with?
Hope general correspondence will be next, yep. Any more on conservation?
I think that's enough to get us started.
General correspondence, I didn't see anything in the file. Was there anything? Okay. There's an agenda item, town meeting's Article 20, is that correct, Brian?
Yes.
Coming up. I think we should have a discussion on Article 20. It is Spring Bar's Road housing. It's not on our agenda tonight, so in order us to discuss it, we have to have it on a planned agenda item. So I'd like to propose is we have it next week. Is that the date?
29th, that would get you before town meeting.
Jim?
Yeah?
I have a question.
Another item?
Yeah, for future agenda items. I had a conversation with Brian the other day talking about the proposed development on Main Street. It was originally referred to as a hotel, and now it's a 40B development. And it's with the Fay property. And looking at it right now, I said that I felt as though it was a missed opportunity for the town. And Brian explained to me that, and reviewed with me, the fact that when referrals go to the Cape Cod Commission, all of the local purview comes to a halt while the Cape Cod Commission investigates it and makes a recommendation, and/or a ruling, actually. And he said that, that for many years, the planners on Cape Cod have tried to see whether or not we could change the Cape Cod Commission's charter, I guess, so that instead of everything coming to a halt at the local level when it's passed off to the Cape Cod Commission, that the local people continue to work with the Cape Cod Commission in a parallel manner. So in our discussion, I would like us to, at a future town, a future meeting of ours, to discuss having an article at fall town meeting that would, that would change the, recommend a change in the Cape Cod Commission's charter so that the towns could continue to be involved in the process rather than being shut out during the Cape Cod Commission's deliberations. So that's my suggestion is that we discuss this. Brian will, Brian can brief all of us much more thoroughly than I am right now about this, and I just thought we could put it on a future agenda item, and maybe we could get, maybe could get that issue resolved so that other towns, including ourselves, don't have these missed opportunities occurring. So I just would like to see after town meeting, after the election, that at some point we discuss this and then possibly put an article on fall town meeting.
I concur fully. Brian, is something we can do unilaterally, or do all the towns in the Cape have to do it?
Well, we'll find out what mechanism has to be, but I think this board wants to have a discussion about how it can interact with the regional planning agency. That's a good thing. They want to have Mr.
Is Wiki?
No. Our representative to the Cape Cod Commission is Mr. Rockford. You may want to have that person here to discuss it with that person, and they may have the mechanism to do it. It may not be a town meeting article, it might have to be an actual vote of the legislature. But we can find out what that is.
I think that's a great idea.
Got it.
Anybody else?
Yeah, no one.
Yes, Paul?
We were talking about having a joint meeting with ZBA. We're going to do the conservation maybe in June. We should probably think about a joint meeting with ZBA sometime in the summer. So I'd like to at least throw that out so it's out there for future discussion.
It's definitely out there, and it's going to be, I know one topic is going to be the accessory bylaw for sure.
Definitely.
And we may come up with others.
So we should at least look at it being out there.
You want to put it on paper sometime, Brian?
I got it down. Article of ZBA joint meeting, summer. Squeeze it in.
Yeah, one other item. At the joint meeting of the Board of Selectmen, they approved a number of things, microwave report and so forth. And one was the planning study for the McMahon Transportation Group. What's the next step on that? What is going to happen now? Are they going to design something? Does the town contract directly with them? How does that mechanism work? I've asked twice now what the process is, and their answer always was, we know how to do it. But they never explained what the process is. So they're in a contract to do something.
As a future, as a future agenda item, I can brief the board on how the project need assessment's done by the highway district engineers. It evolves to a project information by the highway engineers. The board can weigh in on stuff, but there's no plane board role. Right. But I can certainly brief the board at a future meeting about, sort of the, on that process, the same one we do with the intersections.
It would be helpful because the newspaper made it look like we did have a role in it.
You do, you always have a role because the charter says you're supposed to weigh in on some of these items.
But the vote was the plan, was the Selectmen.
But the Selectmen are the Board of Public Works.
Right, they're the DPW guys.
They're the DPW.
Commissioners.
It goes from planning to operations. It's going from planning to operations. It's a planning document, it's done. Now it's entering into a design phase. But I'll, no problem.
Who does the design? Does the town do it, or does McMahon Associates do it?
It would have to be vendored if we were to, we probably wouldn't do it in-house. It's just too time-consuming. So we would put out an RFP. The state highway folks sometimes take up the design, like on Route 151 and 28A. That was an in-house District 5 design by Mast Dot. Just depends on the resources that we have to hire as consulting engineer and the urgency to, you know, how soon do you want to get it done, and try to schedule it into the tip process for the construction money. So it's sort of balancing it out.
One final comment, too. It'd be nice to get an update on what's going on with the state highway project along 28. I know it was delayed for the winter, and it was slowed down because the water mains were added to the project. And maybe it's not going to occur, and then it will stop working again, but it'd be nice to know what the scheduling, a lot of people are asking.
I can just get that for you.
And do we have to schedule a site visit for Maravista because it's going to be a corum? Should we put that on the schedule now?
I'll have to check my schedule and talk, talk to you. We're probably looking at maybe Tuesday next week because you're going to be meeting anyhow. So we'll try to maybe go out, take a look around, and then come back here and have a. So we'll try to maybe go out, take a look around, and then come back here and have a meeting. Is my thought, so let me.
See what you can do.
What I can do for you, okay?
What about Maravista, Jim?
Site visit.
What's going on in Maravista?
That's Cedar, that's the subdivision that we looked at, we had a preliminary meeting on it today.
Oh, you're calling it Maravista.
Well, it's on Maravista, Cedar, and Cypress, sorry. I call the whole neighborhood Maravista, it's just.
Sunland property.
Right.
Okay.
It's the Realtor in me, we refer to it as the Maravista area, that's what we call it, sorry.
Not a property owner?
No, I'm not a property owner.
Nobody is.
So next week is Precinct Three on Tuesday night, so I won't be here.
That's why you weren't going to meet on the twenty-third.
It's only one person.
Will Pat be back?
We'll talk about it.
Yeah, we'll figure it out.
Figure it out.
Are we talking about whether or not we're going to meet next week or?
Yeah.
Okay. So you'll get, this says April twelfth.
I know, but we changed that earlier, I already said the next meeting will be the twenty-ninth, but we got to check to see if we're going to have a quorum, because Doug's not available.
Well, I got, I should attend Precinct Three, somebody should attend Precinct Three.
What time is the meeting?
Seventy. I could come at six-thirty and then race down to Gus County.
Is there any possibility of an earlier meeting?
We might just switch, is this going to be one item, you can probably meet, let's check this.
We'll figure it out.
Maybe you can meet at six.
I was just wondering if we can meet early.
Yeah, six left.
And, you know, have.
Talk.
We'll talk, we'll talk.
We'll figure it out.
Okay.
Have your people call my people.
You call me, I'll call you.
So I need to actually study this subdivision plan a little bit, there's, they're asking, need some homework on that one. So leave the plans here, we'll come to the office and look at it, right?
Motion, George Ryan?
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Beautiful.